I'd like to call to order the Colchester Planning Commission. It is 7:10. So the first item tonight we're going to have is Agenda Considerations, Solutions of Agenda Items or Revisions for Agenda Order. This will be a new item to point today. Thank you. This will be a new item we're going to add, just in case we want to make last minute decisions. Order Agenda. So if you'd like that for that, Kathy? No? Okay, so we're going to go to, these are comments and questions from the public not related to the agenda. We're going to see it for the other one purpose. Very good, thank you. All right, here we go. So we have Development Regulations, Public Outreach Related to Development Standards in the area of East Lake Shore Drive. And where we told Kathy on this. Go ahead.
All right.
That's what we want to do.
So, this has been a work in progress for quite some time, at varying stages. The last two town plans, I believe, had direction in it to look at the zoning along both West Lake Shore and East Lake Shore Drive. West Lake Shore was rezoned in 2016, if I remember right. And at the time, it was just a little too much to get to East Lake Shore. The 2019 Town Plan reaffirmed that as a goal. And when the Planning Commission met after sort of the COVID hiatus throughout last summer, identified the rezoning of East Lake Shore as the number one priority. So here we are, kicking off some of the public outreach for that. What we have tonight to get us started is more of an interactive session. We'll start with some of what we call a visual preference survey. If you look around the room, you're going to see a bunch of pictures up on the wall. In the back corner here, there is a table with a bunch of sticky pads and some pencils. I'm hoping that everybody will take some, walk around to the various pictures. I want to start by saying that none of these are in Colchester. Most of them are in Vermont. So these are not completely out of scale with Vermont, but there's a lot of thoughts, I bet you already have on them and probably will have on them. So if you can just sort of spread yourselves out once I'm done chatting, grab those. What I'm hoping everyone will do is take a look at them, write anything on those sticky notes that you like. Maybe label it as an "L." Anything you dislike. Try to be as specific as possible. You could talk about windows, doors, closest to the road, height, character, anything that pops out to you in terms of what is appealing to you. And try to put that in context of East Lake Shore Drive. Because I think that's important. Maybe there's something you like in Burlington, but you wouldn't necessarily like on this road. So, that's going to be exercise one.
I'm just, maybe I'm catching up. So what do you say, is all of East Lake Shore Drive residential now? And you're talking about changing it to residential or something else?
We don't know.
Okay.
It's considering, so when we're kicking this off, we're trying to understand what folks are envisioning. So this is a visioning exercise. It's possible, very likely to be a rezoning. As a bit of a background, East Lake Shore right now is R2. That is the same zoning, and you can see it on this map here. Feel free to hop in and look at that as you're bouncing around. That is the same zoning that extends out quite a bit. Goes up Williams Road, includes a lot of some of the more suburban areas. If you're not sure what R2 means, this board over here is another place I invite you to add some comments. What you'll see on there is Lake Shore 1 and Lake Shore 2. Lake Shore 1 is West Lake Shore Lakeside. That's the area that was rezoned in 2016. It is different than Lake Shore 2, that's the West Lake Shore Drive, non-Lakeside. So you can see what sort of was envisioned and what has been in place now for six or seven years for that area. I've also included the current zoning up there for R2. That is the current zoning for most of East Lake Shore. I say "most," the first few properties, as you'll see on this map, as you turn onto East Lake Shore, are actually part of the L1 and L2 that were part of the rezoning for West Lake Shore. I don't, I don't know the history of why those few properties were considered...
Who said again?
So there's a few properties on East Lake Shore that were included in the L1, L2 rezoning.
I don't, I think it's just the way it laid out. We wanted consistency.
Okay. Yeah, so it's not in the entirety of East Lake Shore, it's most of it, but you'll see here. As for the depths of the properties, I think that's something else. Especially the non-Lakeside of East Lake Shore. Something else we'll be talking about and trying to figure out. There are some properties that have frontage right on East Lake Shore. There are some that have that frontage, but extend back quite a bit. I think the parcel lines are on this map, so you can see those. I don't know, it'll be part of what we're talking about, where that rezoning, if it happens, would take place. There's a general agreement that the R2 zoning is not appropriate for at least parts of East Lake Shore. We have 40-foot heights that are permitted in R2. There's been some talk about that, there's lots sizes. Other dimensional standards, I won't get into too much because what we're here tonight is not to talk to you, but to hear from you. Part of that will be hearing from you in terms of your notes here. I invite you to also leave some notes up here. You'll see some blanks on sort of those dimensional standards. I hope everyone can get to that one especially. Any other notes for things that you think about that stand out to you along East Lake Shore would be really helpful for the Planning Commission to hear back. We, when we're done with this exercise, we'll sort of take a look through. And then if anyone wants to share their thoughts or talk about anything, there's definitely going to be some time to hear that and talk through that again. The goal of tonight is really a listening session. It's to hear from everyone. And we don't have anything prepared to give to you. We can talk when we're done with this about timing and what the next steps will be. But our goal tonight is to hear from folks on what they want to see and what they like. And some of that will come through sort of assessing some of these visualizations. You'll see that some of these are non-residential properties. Feel free to add any thoughts you have on the very idea of any sort of non-residential property or specifics as you bounce around.
Are you distinguishing between Lakeside and non-Lakeside in this visualization?
In the visualization, sure. If you'd like to do that on your notes, but you don't have to. You could, you certainly feel free to say, "Love this for Lakeside, hate it," anything like that. Be as specific or as broad as you'd like with your notes, put as many as you like. If you'd like to write a bunch about one that you absolutely like and never get to the rest, that's okay. It's really, really up to you. Again, I do hope that everyone does at least take a look at this board because there's some more specifics that you can provide and share. There's some coffee, some water, some cookies in the back. I really hope this is sort of a fun and engaging exercise because I think it's a good way for us to hear from people without having to force you to stand at a microphone and elaborate on various things. And sometimes things are more challenging to articulate until you can see them. And hopefully that'll be what this exercise is for. I'm going to poke the commissioners to do the exercise as well and share some thoughts, or at least maybe bounce around and talk to people.
I want to thank everybody for coming tonight too. This is very important to us. We can discuss amongst ourselves all day, but people that live there, they should have the biggest opinion. So that's, this is the best turnout we can ask for. I hope you all feel comfortable taking a walk around like Kathy suggested. This is something new to try for us. Hopefully it just gets more ideas out there.
Could I ask a question before we start?
Absolutely.
In terms of, there's a Town Rec Center, which has a plan on East Lake Shore, correct?
Kathy, do you know anything about that? I'm sorry, I don't... Town Rec Center?
So that would be the Hazler property?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm even better.
That would be here.
Is there any plans on either side of East Lake Shore Drive that go with that property? Like in terms of the size of the center? And are they going to do anything on the Lakeside with those plans?
Not by all.
So I do, I'm glad you asked that question. I do want to, and this isn't a direct response to your question, but I do want to remind folks that the Planning Commission has, they have a big job. The regulations certainly cover a bunch, but there's also a bunch that they don't cover. I know that there are folks who may have lingering sewer questions. There may be lingering questions about traffic and sidewalks. Please understand that nowhere in the regulations does, do we address those things? Speed limits, et cetera. And while you may have very valid and important thoughts on those, we're hoping what you can share with the Commission tonight are those items that we can regulate and think about and change if need be.
You mentioned a lot of things that you can't regulate. What are the things you can regulate then?
Ah, yeah, so dimensional standards are being probably the biggest one.
Of course, structural and a lot.
Yeah, so when you're talking about the structure, the setbacks from the road, the heights, the amount of the lot that something can cover, parking requirements for an individual lot. There's the use of a building or a lot that can get regulated through zoning. There's aesthetic criteria, design criteria, for example. Must have a door on the front, must have windows, anything like that. It's sort of mostly what comes to mind. Yeah. I'm sure there's something I'm forgetting, but those are the big things that we're really looking at for this exercise.
How you requirements?
Yeah, how you, yeah, the dimensional stuff. Does that sound... Any other questions? All right.
I might get you to go along.
Yeah, I'll be bouncing around too. And there's a whole bunch of sticky notes, grab as many as you need. Pencils, pens.
I have just one more question too.
Yeah.
On open spaces.
Uh huh.
So we can say we'd like more open spaces? Or we don't feel that there's any open spaces left at this point? So are we, because we can't reconstruct what's already there, so to speak.
So that's a great question. So you're talking about public open spaces?
Yeah.
Yeah, so not necessarily as part of this exercise. I'm happy to talk to you one-on-one about it. When we talk about, there are certain tools that we're not considering tonight, like an official map that communities can use to plan for open spaces. It's more, it's a long-range plan where you might identify a space. I don't, I don't think that we are looking at doing that exercise anytime soon. But it is a tool that is available to Planning Commissioners.
You're looking at height and dimension. The dimensions are pretty much set with what's already there, so to speak.
So...
We might suggest a change.
Yeah. So the regulations, especially for the Lakeside, do allow for rebuilding in a current footprint. And that's important. And I don't, I don't believe there's been any talk about changing that. It becomes a very sticky legal issue if you look at anything different than that. But that is again, a footprint that does not hold over to, or is a non-conform law. At least on the Lakeside. The regulations speak to not increasing that non-conformity. But again, there's also some height issues. There are still lots that are not built or could be subdivided. We still see, we get calls about these lots. So they're not all necessarily going to turn over in the way that we've seen many, but I think the majority are right, are...
And then you don't know how many open spaces there are on East, because we're just dealing with East Lake Shore Drive. You say, you know, there's 89 and there's definite spaces confidently for what we've been planning on. I mean, I'm just saying, because if you're saying open lot spaces, I don't even know anything to think about.
Publicly owned, you mean?
Yeah, so...
Yeah.
Definitely food for thought. So once we get started, we'll do this, and then we can come to the mic. We'll have that same discussion again and for ideas and for what we're looking at. So we can start with that. Oh, absolutely.
Kathy, can, I think it's a Select Board realm, but in terms of traffic calming, speed bumps, or something that would kind of slow traffic?
Yeah, so that's going to be the Select Board realm. I mean, there's, there's an argument to be made that there are, there are tools, there are design tools that can help in traffic calming. Ironically, a lot of times there's a belief that as you bring properties closer to the road, that that can be a natural traffic calming. Porches, anytime you have the visibility of pedestrians and livability, can have a natural calming effect. So there's some design criteria that might speak to that. But as far as actual speed bumps, speeds, that's going to go to the Select Board, not the Planning Commission.
All right.
So I'm going to bounce around if that's okay.
Yep, absolutely. Take a look? Might as well.
This is what the current was, no. This is current for R2. This is current for Lake Shore 2, which is West Lake Shore. Just to give you an idea of...
Is it the West Lake Shore that might want to go from something like this to...
Just as you're trying to get an understanding, if for example, you think that the Lakeside of East Lake Shore should be similar to the Lakeside of West Lake Shore. This would tell you what the...
I guess I don't know much about what the homes are on West Lake Shore.
Right, because I think they're back, you know, if you're going down West Lake Shore, you're more in the retail area until you kind of go through a little... It is very diverse. There are some small homes on small lots, just like you have on East Lake Shore. Not as many. There's some larger lots, there are some streets that come on, I think. There's, I think, an inn or a hotel of some sort of end breakfast, maybe, I think.
I'm very interested in the building, I think, because you have a very tall home just across the street from us on Lake Shore.
Probably pushing the 40 feet. And we're trying to, we're trying to figure out... And that's 40 feet or two.
Is that three stories? What, three stories?
I remember that she's been living there, and they spent time together. And you let the new house? True.
Just to check sound.
Instead of the bus?
Yeah.
Are they condos or are they commercial? And then, also, for the whole car?
So they just use that fancy stuff?
Yeah.
Something to...
To allow the people to street, to have, that it would not be a barrier? They want to be, I think, a better...
Yes.
So, that's one house on...
Keep the yard.
How wide is 40 feet? What's that, does that give you a choice?
So I would like to... I think they should, on the Lakeside, I'm going to do a refill, make that...
So, a lot of the Lakeside, and when you're looking at that, being that you're from, you're not, you don't measure from the road. I'm not in charge of that.
On the Lakeside or that?
I think people are still writing. Are you okay with just letting it go a little longer?
People are happy. Yes, nobody's arguing.
No.
I get a lot of ideas.
I want to hear what's coming out of this, so I mean... I may bounce over to a different man, but...
That went fantastic. I want to thank Kathy for that. This is all her idea. Great ideas, great one-on-one conversations to understand where we are and where we want to go. We'll let Kathy take over now, let her do her thing, get us our points.
I think what I want to do next, because I am appreciative of everyone's time and everyone coming out to share what they have with us. I want to just spend a very quick few minutes sort of bouncing around at the pictures and maybe just calling out a thing or two I see. I do want to make sure that we have some time for anyone who wants to share a thought out loud for everyone to hear, for the Commission to hear, or even for the Commission to respond to, that you have an opportunity to do that, so we will do that as well. And lastly, I want to be able to touch on the process so you know what the next steps will be and what we're doing and maybe not doing. Something I didn't say earlier, but that I think is important to articulate, is that the plan for doing this, and because it has been so long sort of as a goal to look at this area, the Commission discussed at their last two meetings that this might be sort of a phased approach, that there's the potential for a lot of changes to the regulations in this area, and maybe even some very good ones. We want to make sure though, that we don't let the perfect be the enemy of the good and that there's, we have a goal of getting to the biggest, most important things for folks early. And so those important things may move along quicker ahead of maybe some smaller items that are still as important to people, but maybe either need more articulation, more conversation, more refinement. Those may be in a phase two. So I do want to sort of preview that for folks because I think that's important. And if we do have a draft set of regulations that we start to look at in the spring and summer here, and you see something that you brought up or that was important, that didn't make that first cut, it doesn't mean that it won't. It's just that there are some things, if there are big things that the Commission and the Select Board want to see soon, we don't want to have the other things slow that down. Doesn't do any good to write zoning changes if every property is completely redeveloped before you get a chance to adopt them. So it's important that some things may move faster. So I appreciate patience with that. I'm going to read, if that's okay.
Yep.
I don't know anymore I should start, but I'm very interested in seeing some of these. So these are, you know, these are a little, a little fun for me because they're not, they're a little non-residential. Let's see, what do we have? No more commercial, commercial lots. And these are really helpful, I think, to hear these kinds of thoughts. Cheesy looking. So I know, I don't think there are a lot of fans of this one. And, but, but hearing that is just as helpful as hearing things you like. So I will take all of these and compile them into a document for sharing. That will be available on our website, so everyone can see everything that's on here. No commercial, okay. West Lake Shore maybe. Cute. Needs a facade, okay. Commercial could work at Bayside, okay. Some mixed, mixed reviews of this type of, with work, of kinds of planning work. No more commercial, not a fan, yuck. Love the idea of a shop like this. All right, I'm getting a name. No commercial. That's okay. What do you got here? I have a question. Who thinks this is residential? Who thinks it's a commercial?
It's area therapy.
That's what I love about it. I know what it is. It's very transitional because it could be an apartment tomorrow as the market changes. It's a small cheese shop or an artist studio two years from now. Maybe not appropriate for Lake Shore, we'll see. Nice, but too much for East Lake Shore, see? Seems ugly, don't be more ugly, okay? One of your lucky choices, I did. Like it. Utility should be covered, oh, that's kind of cool. Overfill for the area, great entry.
Oh, this is the door.
Oh, the door, thank you. So this one, this is the same front figure, it's on the other side. Same building, two different views. One's coming from the door, and one's coming from the... So, this is like bouncy. Yeah, give it extra pretty. We're going next to this, isn't that, there's parking, parking. Quaint. Touristy. Commercial on desire, okay, so good. As long as we can park safely, this could be cool. I think the reason that I wanted to share this one with you is because I think it's so approximate to what East Lake Shore is in terms of how close it is and...
Especially Dorsey's Corner, it looks just like Dorsey's Corner.
Is that the one that's downright like...
The intersection of Bay Road, it's like...
Just as you, yeah, okay. Yeah, that's what it brought to mind there. There's, is it a marina or a...
There used to be a, like, city.
Oh, it was, yeah. Did people like it? Did people like it when it was there?
Oh, yeah. We was talking, they had a public beach in front of it, right? Or a private public beach, is what they had in front.
It's just a lot, I think, in terms of size and depth. Do they have parking?
Yeah.
Do they have parking?
The road wasn't as light in that turn, so they had a lot of area between the road.
I think the difference that I saw in looking at similar communities like this is that, and this is this route there, you're bouncing almost entirely across the street, and we have lots that doesn't exist, I think, on East Lake Shore. So that is an important difference where you weren't as pressed on the same side. The city was a whole parking lot across the street. Which is a different spot that we're talking about, used to, and parking across the street.
Yeah, I don't think the houses on the other side would look yet, though.
Not right, I remember.
There was nothing there.
People are...
It's been a while, a few years.
Yeah.
It seemed like yesterday, I thought it was yesterday.
That's what happened, you know, all there's...
That's what they were still on.
It doesn't really, it's pretty bad.
Too narrow, okay. I did pick this one because it was narrow, because what we're seeing on East Lake Shore, there are very narrow lots. And, you know, trying to see what fits into that type of lot. Compacted, two stories. Green sale. Let's go. For East Lake Shore, nice size. Too close to neighbors. Parents. Aesthetically, yeah. Not too big. This one, I want to, I'm focusing here, not a good pick, yeah. This feels very more than a mortgage. The drums with the waterfront, out of character. The other thing I noticed when looking at other similar communities... The other thing I noticed when looking at other similar communities was just how many lakeside communities, either bauzzing or some of them are in Lake Sunapee and Panter, how common garages were, and we don't see that on East Lake Shore.
I thought that was an interesting idea.
But it is less common, especially in the lakeside. So it stood out to me. The garage, which is not out of character, it's not fit, not popular. Got it. Message your...
I just put sticky on, but what I thought about that was that they use their natural resources. That's probably random. You know, that...
We were kind of debating in my office as whether it was real.
Yeah, well, not only do my first thought, we're using local resources.
Yeah. And feel free at any point before you leave, if you want to add more sticky or have additional thoughts, to do it, even as we're talking. Get up, walk around. More bauzzing. Parking needs to be better designed. Good for the lake. Like for parking availability. Parking stood out to people on this one, okay. Anything about the house? Anything about the house? Any extra bucks they want to...
Can you say there's a door or...
This stood out to me, too. I was curious what people would think of that, if they care that there's a door or not, if it changes anything for you. Without leaving anywhere.
Hers was much bigger, snowed off, you know, doors, snowed off.
Yours, you removed it, so you said...
Oh, the person's...
Removed it?
Two minutes inside, it was open. Snowy. Probably a little bit of snow down there.
It is nice that they use a modest store, and it's real appropriate.
I hear you, yeah. Yeah. So you have thoughts on the actual building before you go? You got an extra sticky in here, no? I was still curious about that one. So this is another thing, as I was looking around at different communities, that stood out to me. How frequent the fence is were used. Especially on like Sunapee and stuff, this is bauzzing again, but I was intrigued that we don't see that on East Lake Shore. I'm not saying it's better or worse, but it's different.
There's a few...
There are?
Yeah.
So, oh, good, I'm glad people commented on this. Somebody doesn't like the fence. Parking is very, not a good question, probably across the street, because that's how it is there. Great, I get someone like this one. Looks nice along the lake, well done. Pedestrian risk. Just liked it, the parking. No walk safely. Nice hidden roadside, don't like the fence. I was very curious what people would think of the fence. I'm still curious as to, I think that this is good feedback. So if you have thoughts that you want to share before you go about the fence especially, I don't know if that gets worked into any final product, but I am curious. And we've got two that don't like it.
Well, we made, I'm trying to think, this fence up here, on the 10th foot, and the 11th not, I think.
Yeah, I know.
So we ended up, we don't...
Six.
Something like that, yes. So there is some kind of order, so to speak, I guess, for the...
Yeah, yeah, the level of six, you have to...
Level of six, okay.
It's a different process, you can go by the fence. All right, oh, okay. To the point. Too many units. Too many stories. And this one is actually, you can't tell, I don't know, I don't know what it looks like in the ground.
It goes west.
I don't know if it's two, five, what it is in the road.
I don't know.
This is the lakeside. Too tall.
There's a whole big front.
Variety, spice of life. Doesn't look right at all.
I was trying to use the other night, right?
Don't like this one. Nice. Too key west. Nice, small, quaint, cute, nice look, pretty, like cottage feel.
Yeah, but those are the ones they tore it out.
Yeah.
Those are all the ones they tore it out.
So questions that I would have for anyone, again, you can either talk about it now or add some more thoughts. You know, is it just the height of this? What elements stand out? What I'm trying to dig into is which elements make you like this? For those folks who said that they really like this, I'm very curious. Is it the articulation of the porch area? Is it the roof line? Is it just that it's one story and that's good enough? Is this one story the same as that one story?
Sometimes it's hard, because you're going like, oh, I used to do my grandmother shit, questions like that. So you're thinking of paths that aren't true. So I don't know, I think we get caught.
Yeah. I think it's because of set nations. Mostly the trees are most sort of, you know, the landscape, I go first. This one has landscape, and that one...
That one had landscape, and you were there to do a lot of...
Is it super access in the front? They've got some to keep, not true.
You don't really want to involve the look of it, or anything, you want some character involved.
Right.
Character, yeah.
And that has the character, I guess, in the looks. It could be a little, it could be a story and a half or two stories, it wouldn't matter. Could be a whole story in the ground, it wouldn't matter to me, it just has a, you know, a campy look to it.
We didn't talk about color either, like somewhere like an orange house versus a... We didn't talk about color either.
You can talk about anything.
Oh, I know. You haven't mentioned that.
Yeah. If you have thoughts on that, you can share them here, or you can blank paper back there for random thoughts that don't get really associated with anything. Yeah, the more comments, the better, I think. So this one's, this one's fun, okay. So this is one story at the street. Just to point out, this is one story at the street. And four, four down here. Too big, too big. Oh, fantastic, fantastic? Somebody liked it. No, too big, doesn't fit. Large, and grand.
Do you allow, do you know build downs on the beach zone or something?
If you, so again, it's what your realistic footprint was. It's 150 feet. So no new structures, we've got 150 feet of the lake, which goes really across the road. 150 feet will get you through those lots and halfway into the road, maybe you will cross.
And you're not supposed to cut anything between...
Yeah, then there's the tree.
150 feet from the water, you can't cut.
But if you had already built this, or a structure here in 1920 or something, you can still build up to here. They're not following regulations, so you would be able to build it fresh if you had nothing here. Okay. All right, so in all fairness, this is not a beachfront property, but it was narrow when I was traveling. Really, that was my goal here. Tall, okay, yes. Too high, too narrow, too high. So what do we get? Probably, that's probably about 35 feet to the tip of the ridge, is my guess. Too tall on lakeside, just so you know, 40 feet right now. Love it. Looks okay. Looks like a red hill. Nice house. So I am curious if anyone wants to share with me. So the people who liked it, are there certain elements that you liked about it? Any in particular? Anyone who did like it, I'm curious. The porch? The windows?
Color, the porch.
The color of the porch?
The overall, or the look?
And it doesn't have, you stop the line, all the porch.
Yeah.
Yeah, just a flat job.
At least a porch makes it not a very tall.
We can be funny, if you have...
Yeah, where's the ugly one? If you put a porch on the ugly one, it's blue, it's more with the...
So porch, color, like your windows?
Yeah, but the thing is, you don't want big windows, if this is towards lakeside, would you want big windows on the roadside, would you? I mean, I don't know.
True.
I mean, you'd want it if it was facing the lake, but you can't tell what position that is, if that was looking...
I gotta ask you a question. If I do that, do you still like it? If it's flat?
No.
Well, it's gonna be flat anyway, because you don't, with snow, you get them like...
Yeah, you need a...
That's true. So we see a lot of shed roofs, so they're kind of flat with just enough of a pitch for the snow, but they're not, they sort of pitch back at a very slow, that's why we're seeing a lot of new roofs come in. Yeah, and I don't know if it's just because you can fit more, we're talking about 40 feet. You know, this is not a lot of living space, but you still have to count all of that. I don't know necessarily what's driving the flat roof redesigns. But almost all of them, if you drive down and look at the new ones, they're largely flat roofed, or close to flat roofed, a shed roof where it doesn't have that same pitch.
Yeah.
That was two stories.
But some comments I heard before tonight have been about roofs. So that's why I'm sort of pushing, just to hear some feedback on that, because...
Well, if that house was positioned, it should have the great...
No, oh, yeah.
Place it this way.
Like, I don't like it.
But that's, that's...
Yeah, some of that, that's what most of the rest are like anyway.
Yeah, there's, I mean, some of the new ones we've seen are sort of like that, right?
I don't know, I haven't seen one like that yet, most of them.
I think there's a new blue one at the bottom of Williams. You get a lot of calls about.
Is that a slide?
It's, um...
Still.
Yeah, I'm making, there were comments on it, I'm just saying, but see, that I've heard. So that one is largely flat, with a little bit of pitch. But it's not, it's definitely not this. Okay, moving on. Anyone like this one?
No.
No, well. Looks like a utility building, ugly, ugly. This is a sophomore one, I didn't think anyone would like it. It's the, um...
Looks like a silo.
Yeah. All right, I can move on from that one fast, I didn't think anyone would like it. All right, let's see. It's okay, not cottage. Looks good, off-street parking. Cottage, little camp, great, oh, people like this one. Good match with our town. Like it. Okay, so, let me push you again. What do you like about it? So a lot of people like it. What do you like? Okay, tell me something. Is it...
Okay, you guys, get up there, where were some of you like it?
A lot of people like it. It is cute. But what is it that makes it cute for you? What stands out? I can tell you what stands out for me, but...
Isn't it barn style roof?
Is that a question or a statement?
That's a question, is it that?
I don't know, is it? Do you like it?
I think his question is, is that what you call it, a barn roof?
Oh, like a gamble, yeah.
A gamble.
Yeah, it's almost a gamble.
A gamble, yeah.
Yeah.
A gamble, or the deck on the front, right?
You like the deck?
Yeah, that's what I'm... And I think the statement earlier, it's different enough that it adds to the character.
Okay. So you like the uniqueness of it?
Yeah. You'd take it as such.
So do you guys like it as much if it doesn't have a deck?
No.
No. Do you like it as much if there are no windows or doors?
No, no.
Does it matter to you if it's a flat roof or not?
Well, if it doesn't...
That one doesn't have much of a pitch. I'm just curious, I'm not saying it should. All right. That's helpful. Thank you. All right, well, this one's kind of like that, one I know, they're not that different, but... Parking, yeah. Has character, parking. Yeah. That's the parking concern, I think everyone has the same thought on this one. Like this. Cottage. Drop a catheras. Pedestrian risk. Pulling out to the road yard, I don't know how you do it. But the structure itself seems pretty popular.
Around here anyway.
Yeah. Kind of hard to offend people with a cute little one-story camp.
And it's nice on the lakeside, so that even on the other side, you can still kinda see the lake.
You've got, I think it's probably two stories in the back. I think that this is a similar change in grade that you see along East Lake Shore. I think it's pretty similar there. A second story, okay on this one? I have strong thoughts.
Lakeside or not lakeside?
If I lived across the street, I'd probably say no way.
I think it's nicer for everybody.
But that would, once the service or that one will get us something.
Yeah. All right. I think I hit the end of those, but I do want to talk about this, if that's okay. Rich, are we still okay for time?
Yep, go ahead.
So I know maybe a lot of folks didn't get to process this too much, and thank you.
Alinda.
Thank you, Alinda. Thank you for writing these on here for me. Somebody asked that I put this on the website, and I will, because I think it does allow you to sort of compare what's out there now. It was helpful for me, as I was trying to understand. So if you weren't here when I was talking about it, so Lake Shore one, again, is West Lake Shore, lakeside. So if you're going up West Lake Shore, this is the existing standards for that portion. I think it's in sort of the, I don't even know, it probably is over there. But that's the West Lake Shore, lakeside, it's a little bit of East Lake Shore as well. I've not heard of any real concerns since this was adopted in 2016. We've seen a couple of rebuilds on the lake. There's not as many, it's less properties, I think, but there's been a few. Haven't heard major concerns, seems to be working out okay for folks.
But then that was, that area, I believe, was the newer, newer one that there.
Yeah, how old is that? I'm not familiar with it. Is that recent?
Seven years, I think.
Is it about that?
Yeah, about seven years.
I wonder if that predated this or not?
And it was already a building there.
There was a building there.
There was a building there.
So it's such a rebuild, yes, whatever, yeah.
Do you guys like it?
I think it's...
I didn't want to take, I didn't want to...
On West Lake Shore Drive, I think it's it. They've got frontage and, yeah. And, yeah. Good space.
I like the colors.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There are, there's different textures on the outside, right? Some flat, flat steel, and some wood and things, it was all the, whoever did it, I did it.
Which of this?
I know anyone who did it, but... So I don't know if that was built under this zoning or not. And I don't know the zoning that was there before I got... Who was that? Did that have a zone?
What's that?
What was the West Lake Shore on the, before you guys rezoned it?
It was hodgepodge, mix of commercial, R2.
Bunch of different stuff?
Yeah. Yeah.
So you'll see that the big difference is really between the non-lakeside and the lakeside is, you know, sort of the recognition. You'll see it in the uses, not just the standards here, but in the uses. And we're not necessarily here to talk about those tonight, but there is a recognition of the need for sort of some commercial spaces on the non-lakeshore side there. Today, this is the R2, this is what affects most of that East Lake Shore area, so... Again, we're in front of a bunch of people asking me about this, but I'll say it aloud for the group. This is just if you're creating a new lot, you'd have to meet this. It doesn't mean that if you already have a lot, that you can't rebuild if you don't have it. And that's an important takeaway. The front yard setback, I do know, so one of the things that we'll be talking about, before I came to the town, there was a review in late spring of last year about what a change in the setback would look like. So we do have that sort of drafted, I don't have it to share here tonight, but we do have some information for what a 30-foot setback actually looks like on East Lake Shore, and I think, I wonder if it's funny? So it starts from the road right of way. I don't know, unfortunately, off the top of my head, what the road right of way is for East Lake Shore.
It moves around a bit on East Lake Shore, because the road has been moved. So it gets a little complicated. Now, definitely a Brian Ozzman question. Because when we start, when we did the study about, because people talk about sidewalks and such, the right of way is not exactly where the road is.
Yeah, ideally you have a road that's centered in your right of way, so it's very easy. You go to the middle, you measure out, you can find where your property line is. You focus on East Lake Shore, not so easy. Yeah, so I don't know, it's probably, it's not that deep, given what we've seen of rebuilds. I know that they're not in the right of way. So it's probably not the edge of the road either. So comments on this are really helpful, I'm not going to read them all out loud now. I do encourage you, either today before you go, or when you get home. I have a stack of cards, I'll bring them over here. If you have thoughts about these as you spend more time with it, this is the bulk of what we're going to be talking about. All of this will inform that. So we may not be talking just about height, we may be talking about some use, or maybe saying height is okay if, maybe stories are more important than actual feet. So those are things we're sort of going to be taking into that, but as you look at this, as you think about it, feel free to continue to send some comments, whether they are on specific pieces or just general thoughts, this is a good place to share it, so... I think that's everything. Before I sit back down, I'm wondering if anyone had any additional thoughts they wanted to share or questions? Before I sit back down, though, I'm wondering if anyone had any additional thoughts they wanted to share or questions, either about process or current zoning.
I guess a good question is current zoning. But right now, it's all residential. There's no control at this point. And I know in, in the past, we talked about, you know, the nature of the control. But, um, and as things go, change going forward, I guess, that would be a consideration. But there's just so many other things that the need is. And the new systems coming through. It's sort of hard to try to figure out going forward, where the fog will be tore up for two years, three years. Because that does make a good base. And that does, I guess what you're planning today is going to try to figure out to help us going forward as that is completed, so. I had a question, too, with that, with all our build and future. I mean, if we don't have a place department, I don't know how we're even going to handle this. So that's a good thing.
I have a question back there.
I know, I was just...
But I do want to, about use. So something that I also want to share with you is that as you're thinking about this, it's not necessarily a dichotomous question. You could feel, not be, you could be absolutely against anything on residential, but feel free to use if and but statements when you talk about these things. You might say, I really don't want commercial, but I'd be okay with a private square foot artist studio. You know, so you can think about it in context. You can talk about size. You can talk about certain types of uses. It doesn't have to be the broad brush of a Starbucks versus, um, an apartment building versus a senior housing house. So anytime you're sharing those thoughts, feel free to put any exclamers on any thoughts you have. Those are helpful because we don't think just in those terms of yes and no. Commercial, not commercial. We have a million use categories. We can create new ones. There are some, for example, on West Lake Shore that say retail's okay if it's less than five thousand per feet. So you can have a small shop, you can have a big shop. That number is something that is malleable for different zones. And it, and it's important that we think about those contexts when we're thinking about things. But it's also perfectly okay to share that, you know, it's, it's... Dichotomous.
It's, that's interesting because it's hard for us to think that way because we're thinking, well, if, um, we wouldn't mind some of that there on East Lake Shore Drive if, if there was silos and if the road was wider and if there's a lot more spaces to pull over and there's more parking. And so we're trying to think of things like that, so, but that's possible.
But that's good. I think it's okay to say, I'm okay with a coffee shop if it has off-street parking behind a building and it's less than a thousand per feet. I don't know, these are things I'm thinking of. But it's okay to have those statements. I think that everything is informative. And it shares where your values are. It may not be where the planning commission agrees with you or not, but, but it gives them insight as to what you're thinking. And that's really helpful. So those are, those are good. Anything else? I'm going to go sit down. I think Rich talked.
Perfect. So I think you got, as far as general conversation, we're all great. I hope everybody enjoyed this. It was very informative for us, I'll tell you right now. If anybody does want to have to say something individually, welcome to come up to the mic, state your name for us. Straightforward deal, but hopefully, I think Kathy covered every corner of everything. I don't think you missed much.
I have a few. I'll be, I don't know if we'll talk about them tonight, but there's a few questions that... There's still more themes to cover. So for example, when LS1 and LS2 were written, we included low-impact development standards. So if you do do anything on, on West Lake Shore right now, you have to have certain LID standards. So you have to treat your stormwater on site, for example, which is not typically a requirement of a residential property. Usually, you're only talking about stormwater management for commercial or, or site plan type properties. So we'll be talking about whether or not copying that. So that'll be a question I have for you. And I'll bring our recommendation, of course, but we'll be talking about that. Stormwater, um...
Well, that's pretty important because we will do whatever it takes to keep the bay clean. It's all small pieces of the puzzle, so.
Yeah.
That's just another piece.
So that's something that's still up there for discussion, but we don't have to do it tonight.
Yeah, sure.
I just want to say thank you for sending these out because I think I'm going to miss this meeting without these. So appreciate you coming to us.
And we are having, um, just before we move on, on Friday morning, for anyone who wants to come again and talk or for anyone who wasn't able to make it, if your neighbors weren't able to make it, if evenings are hard, people at home with children or working second shifts. Friday morning, we will not have the planning commission there, but my staff will be there. Just want to just talk to people, answer questions. We'll have all the pictures again so people can share more thoughts. Feel free to drop in again or let your neighbors know if they weren't able to come, or anyone even across town. I, I think there's value in hearing from people, not just, not just who live on the road, but also pass it every day. Everybody's a stakeholder.
Fantastic. If anybody has anything else, we are going to move on after this. I can't thank you enough for coming tonight again. Said it multiple times, I know, but it's very important. All right.
Thank you.
All right. Good job. Very good job.
It's going to take me a little while to get everything...
Yeah.
Organized, but I'll get there.
Great input. All right, so let's move on. So where are your staff updates?
When do you think the next meeting will be? The month or...
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth.
Yeah, oh, so, um, great question. So we will have a meeting on the nineteenth, but I don't think we're talking about East Lake Shore on the nineteenth. On the nineteenth, um, we have a variety of outstanding zoning requests that people have submitted to us over the last X... So that's the, the report is the nineteenth. I don't think I'm going to be prepared with anything on East Lake Shore. Uh, but the next meeting after that for East Lake Shore, we're looking at May third. It's another Tuesday, seven o'clock at night, May third. And we'll, we probably can't do the postcards again, but, um, we will make sure that that's advertised.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
And then also, have, just if people leave their email, we can...
Yes. Yes, if you leave your email here and you put a star or something next to it, um, we'll keep you on a mailing list. And if you haven't signed up for the town newsletter, we also advertise in that, and it's, it's great. If you haven't signed up for that, if you go right to our website, I think it's right on the main page. Pops up. Sign up for our town newsletter. So I encourage you to do it.
All right. Staff updates.
All right, staff updates. These are pretty quick. So, uh, all-hazard mitigation plan, um, just as a reminder, and for anyone who's not familiar with it, we are required to do this. Uh, most municipalities will do it as a county. We've chosen to do ours, um, ourselves. It is, um, been received by the state and has, uh, had a preliminary approval. It just needs to be adopted by the select board. Once it's actually adopted, it'll get a final approval. Everything looks good there. We had no changes to, that we had to make. Monthly development reports, so every month we put together a listing of, um, permits that we do in the office. What's going on with the DRB. I sent you the February one, unfortunately, the March one. Didn't quite get done.
Yeah.
We're only two days into April, but that'll come around an email. And we put that on our website, too, if anyone wants to see it. Notice of proposed updates to an abiding municipality. So by statute, anytime you do anything, you have to notify any neighboring property. I looked through these ones in Winuski. There's nothing, um, there's nothing I saw in there that would have an impact on, on the town of Bolchester.
Absolutely.
I was just wondering about the traffic impact maybe on Mallett's Bay Ave. and seven by that development in Winuski, that amount of development. Especially Mallett's Bay Ave, if people were cutting, you know, maybe cutting, you know, using it as a shortcut or trying to get to...
Is that specific to their new regulations or just like a general question about...
Just a general question.
You know, I haven't heard anything, but I could follow up with our public works director and see, um, see if there's been any issues. I mean, I drive it fairly frequently. I haven't, I haven't noticed anything, but...
I'm just wondering with the new development, it sounds like they're doing a lot of housing.
Yeah. Um, I'm not sure that it's necessarily in, in that section, but, um, I think really they're focusing right now on the, um... Route seven, yeah. Yeah, coming in from the interstate there.
Yep.
But I think that's the area of, of development right now.
Okay.
And sometimes I read these neighboring codes to see if there's anything cool in there that we might want to see. Not that Winuski's not doing a good job, but there was nothing in there I wanted to steal. That's so you know why reinvent the wheel. But I didn't see anything in there that I thought would be particularly useful in this round. Uh, and then ongoing work of the planning and zoning department. We continue to push permits. You public may not be aware, we had a, a very large staff turnover this summer. And we went from a staff of six to a staff of one. Most of this summer, we had one person who was issuing all of the permits. The deputy town manager and Kathy O'Reilly, who may have just left, um, came down to help. And so we've been staffing the department back up. We now have a staff of four. We're still a little bit more behind on some permitting than I would like, but we're, we're getting, I think, a lot better. The staff is great. The whole team's fantastic. Uh, the DRB is now meeting more regularly again. So we're, we're working our way there. But it's a great crew. If you haven't met them or if you're ever in the town offices, stop and see them. Things are going well. Very talented crew.
Perfect.
The team. Night, I think that's it for staff updates. Do you want me to go right into the next meeting dates?
Yep, update.
Okay. I did put, um, I did put these together for you. They weren't in the packet, I'm sorry. Would you still want dates and ideas of where we'll, where we'll go? So April nineteenth, um... We had promised an April meeting for folks with outstanding zoning requests. So we'll do a consideration on that day. Uh, I may have some staff requests for you as well, too. I'm not quite sure. Uh, there may be a DRB request or two that's been hanging out there. The goal for that meeting will be to follow the new procedure of, do we even want to talk about this? There will be some that are just completely out of line with the town plan, and that'll be a consideration. That might make up a very quick discussion. So that is the nineteenth. The only other thing on the nineteenth will be a presentation of the capital, um, equipment improvement plan. I know I'm going to butcher it. So Renee Marshall, our deputy town manager, will be here to present that plan to you. I don't think that this is going to be a particularly late evening, so I thank you for adding an extra April meeting.
Yep.
But we're going to keep that to those two items. May third, I think we'll resume our review of East Lake Shore. I'm going to highlight, I think, those points and I'm going to put something together for you to respond to. It's going to be a, a best guess based on what I've heard from you, whatever from the community. And, um, and it's spaghetti at the wall for you to organize and, um, talk about. So hopefully we'll have something. If that continues to work out, we may look at a June discussion and possibly a warning for July or August. That's, it, it really depends on the May meeting goes, but...
Yeah.
The goal is a, a May discussion of East Lake Shore, yeah.
Yeah.
And, and also some other outstanding, um, it's going to be supplement forty-four.
Right.
Is there any way we can get some visual, like, maybe, this is just my thinking, like, just some visual, like, uh, what it would look like, what different, what possibilities are from the input that we're getting? So I, you know, I just, I just find it so helpful to see some kind of visual representation.
Well, I'll see what we can do. I tried talking my sixteen-year-old into learning SketchUp.
I know. That's what I was thinking.
Because it's like twenty-five dollars for a student membership. And it's like four hundred for me. He didn't buy it. But we'll see.
Okay.
See if we can get...
Thank you.
The software to do it is out there.
Yep.
But...
Yeah, I know your time, so, you know, but I just thought it'd be helpful.
Yeah, I understand. We'll see. And that's all I have. I think there's some dates that we're holding. Again, those are very malleable at this point. I know summer is a popular vacation time, so we can adjust these as needed if you guys are away. We have an applicant to make member five for the planning commission. I don't think I saw him here this evening. Still in the applicant stage, not, not appointed or not, not even considered at this point publicly, but there is an applicant. So you may be a body of five by your next meeting. I'm not sure.
We're getting a student, another student.
That's, we're working on that in the future, right? That's not right now.
Yeah, I, I don't, I haven't had any conversations about that, but that's something if you guys want to give feedback on...
Yeah, I think that was a COVID pulled over.
Yeah.
Till we get our act together. Get our board back up and...
Yeah, yeah, having that extra body.
Yeah.
I think we're trying to stay away from the risks for, for the student population, but...
Yep, absolutely.
Yes, that's right.
Yeah.
Can I just ask one?
Oh, yeah.
Just, um, the Rick Davy, who I thought gave a really nice, had a nice, you know, suggestions. One of his suggestions was to do a character study. And I was just wondering what your thoughts were on that, um, in terms of East Lake Shore Drive. I mean, it just, you know, it just understand and how to retain the character of, of the drive.
Yeah, um, I'll have to give it some more thought, um, as to how involved something is. It's a tool, but it's not, it, it's a good tool, I guess I will say. Whether or not it is something that we can achieve in the timeline and budget that we've set out for this is, is the real question. So it's, it's a great suggestion and it's a good tool, but I just, I don't know if, if we have the, the time. You know, what we've talked about to date is, we could spend two years talking about this and we might end up with the perfect product. Or we could have six months and get ninety percent of, of what you'd like. And it would actually be in effect for a longer period of time as opposed to if we wait for two years and every... There, 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 there's a lot of rebuilding going on. I think I can count four in the last six months that I've seen come into the office. So two years, I think you're not going to have much to apply it to if we wait too long. I guess that's, that would be my response there. They're great suggestions, but they are time-consuming.
Yep. Just enough they were a good investment in terms of ending up with what, you know...
Maybe ultimately it's your call. I will do whatever you instruct. I would just, you know, caution you to, again, keep an eye out for, you know, the perfect and the good and what your timeframe is.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I have nothing else.
I need a motion for the minutes of February first.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
Yep.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes? All good?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. I need a second. Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Guys, I just need two minutes. Who made those last motions?